Okay. I'd like to call this planning board to order Wednesday, March 13th. We have a quorum. We have Ted, Tara, Sarah, Barbara, and myself, our trustee, recording expert, Susan, and Max. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Max, did you have anything you wanted to -- needed to change? So are there any citizen comments that are not related to the Ollies, the Odd Alewives, or the land use ordinance revisions? Okay, there being none, we will go to new business, first site review, change of retail use for 14 Washington Ollies. You're up.
I thought we were supposed to do the public hearing first, Mr. Chairman.
Last, that's item number five.
Yeah, but Max's memo says the meeting will start at 6:00 PM with a public forum on the shoreline ordinance.
We can -- yeah.
Is that obsolete?
We can certainly do it now, but I don't know.
So what is that from Max that says that?
That was me to the select board.
Well, it just says with a public forum. So our meeting will include a public forum.
We can start with the shoreline ordinance if...
I think it was agreed upon last meeting that that was going to be the last item.
Hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And the agenda so shows, so I'll go by this. Well, no, you're not wrong. We're just not doing it that way.
Mine must have just been off.
That's okay. So, Ollies, please introduce yourself and...
Hi there. My name is Vicki Jones, and I'm here this evening to seek in your approval to open a lunch wagon at 14 Washington Road. If you're not familiar, 14 Washington Road is the former business of Burnham Blumers, owner of Route 1 and 220. And I have submitted paperwork, six actually, a site map, business description, DOT parking lot entrance permit, letter from the landlord, Diane Burnham, site plan review of the ancient and existing septic plant. Going down through, we will have a sign where Burnham Blumers had their sign, and it will say "Ollies." The lighting will be, because we're going to do daylight hours 11, when I start, it's going to be like 11 to 3:00, and as we get warmer weather, I want to go until 7:00 o'clock. The takeout itself has awnings and fluorescent lights that will shine down. And as the summer goes on, there'll be daylight anyway before we close. The seating, we're going to have up to six picnic tables, four seats per table for 24 people to sit. The parking is basically like Diane had it with Burnham Blumers, enough for 10 vehicles to be parked. All spaces will be marked so that when they pull in, they know exactly the direction to be parking in. Employees are going to park, we have a two-car garage, and the employees will be parked in that section, so they're out of the way of the customers parking. And like I said, the hours will end up being 11 to 7:00 days a week. The utilities is in the lunch wagon, it's 50 amps, and the water is self-contained in the tank underneath, and that is gray water, hand washing and utensils. So at the end of the day, that tank will be wheeled in, like most takeouts, they have a contained tank, and they dispose, and that can be put down the kitchen sink, which that's where most of the water goes. Trash, we will have bins around, and they will be emptied throughout the day, because I don't want any rodents around. And trash will be collected and taken to the transfer every day at the station. I'm not going to wait for a trash man to come, and I don't like the looks of a dumpster because they end up smelling, so we're going to just take care of that right off. Food that will be served, for instance, there'll be hot dogs, hamburgers, rubens, wraps, subs, lobster rolls, crab meat rolls, and pan-fried haddock sandwiches. And I also, I've met April Simmons A&amp;A Seafood, and I will be buying my fresh crab meat from her. All of my meats and veggies will be bought locally. My haddock and lobster will be bought from Milco Lobster and Seafood out of Boothbeck. Food will be stored in freezer and fridge in the lunch wagon. We also plan a delivery service within one mile from our location, which during the summer, we feel that, like, for instance, Tuck and Chevrolet, Hellsey Rouse, Dell Furniture, small businesses, the pharmacy is interested in delivery. So we'll do delivery a mile around. And restroom, we're going to have a handicap porta-potty on site, and that will be away from the takeout, because I feel that it's only right to go handicapped, so that it gives, you know, those people a chance to come and be our customers also. There'll be no new construction on site. Diane Burnham feels that she has a buyer for the greenhouse, so that will give us more visibility if that's gone. And I want to give you a little background on Ollies. Ollies was a store in Jefferson in 2010. Actually, we opened March 10th, 2010, and here I am today again in March. Very successful little store. We opened up selling coffee and doughnuts and sandwiches. Within a year, we moved into groceries, automotive, beer and wine. A 2,200 square foot store. I dedicated 90 hours a week there, which is a lot, because you just can't find enough help. Then my mother-in-law was diagnosed with cancer, and we immediately closed because my place is with family. So, and she lived three months, and we see her at the end of her journey. And then we kept running into customers. Ralph and Vicki, when you're going to open up another Ollies? So we took three years off and thought retirement was fun, until it wasn't. So, I mean, we get to travel and have fun, but the customers wanted us back. So we decided that the house come up for rent at Diane's, and we decided, you know what, let's rent it. And then we went to her and asked if it was okay to put a takeout in the parking lot. And she says, sure. So then that's when everything started, and we said, you know what, let's do this. And here we are tonight. So if you have any questions, I'm open for questions.
Are you related at all to Nellie Jones?
No.
Just wondering.
No.
I think I do have one.
Go ahead.
I'm not normally the first one to ask, so I didn't know if it was okay.
Well, you have a second one, because he gets...
That's true, that's true. So I guess the only thing, I'm looking back through my notes here, summertime in Maine, and you see the lines for ice cream kind of wrapped around the block, and I did note that you were going to be serving it with 10 parking spots.
Yes.
So do you have a plan to mitigate that in that area?
Be fast, maybe what we do, and keep turning people over. There could be, you know, if they all park like they should be parked, we could get 12. I don't expect maybe to be busy all the time, but if we are, that's good.
Yeah.
But hopefully, hopefully there won't be a mess.
There's a massive parking lot directly across the street.
Across the street, I know. And if we could put it overparked, it would be much better.
I just asked for permission and travel, be careful crossing the road.
Yes, yes. And you know, I thought about that, and I would suggest to, because I don't think it's right for my customers to be parking in their parking space if they're not giving them business, but they may not mind, but like you said, it is, I wouldn't want to see people crossing the street.
It is convenient.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you going to have a sign that says entrance and exit?
Yes, yeah, entrance and exit. And actually, those are made by Diane signs in West Gardner. She's making my menu sign for the side, and she also makes the DOT signs that you see on the highway, you know, the signs like one quarter mile. She makes those, so yes, we are going to put those in her hands.
And when I looked at, I couldn't really understand the drawing in here, but when I looked quickly at Google Earth, it seems like there's three entrances and exits off the property?
Yes, the further one, the closest one to Route 1 belongs to the mobile home that Diane owns and is rented. And there's not a lot of traffic on her yet. She works at the Maine State Prison, and she's an older woman, so she's hardly there. But yes, we will put a chain across so that nobody can drive in front and continue out that exit, because that's her personal driveway.
So how is this, so you have the DOT approvals for each of those, one entrance and one exit, but are you changing that at all?
No.
Okay.
Entrance will be closer to the railroad tracks.
Yep.
And then they pull in, and then they come out closer to the island.
Okay. And is that, that's been the way it's worked already?
That's the way it's been, yes.
Okay, but there were no, there were no entrance and exit signs before?
She used to have.
Okay.
Yeah, and probably was filed or...
Oh, hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there will be.
Okay.
And they will be set, because I think Stanley has to come and approve that, and when we set them, it'll be so they're not blocking someone's vehicle out, so they'll be done right.
So this shed that might house, might be a rainy day option, which I guess is once maybe the greenhouse is gone, you're going to think about that?
Yes.
Is that something that sits on, I mean, it's not a permanent structure, it's what's...
We bought it from Shed City, Warren. I believe it's 12 by 16, 12 by 16, and it has, it's a beautiful gray with burgundy. It's got barn doors in the front, and those would stay open. And when you walk in, all three sides have like a counter, and we would buy stools to put up so that people can go in there and eat. But, you know, we're hoping she sells the greenhouse so that we have that extra space to put that there.
And when you say you're going to mark the parking spaces, it's kind of a gravelled driveway now, isn't it?
It's gravel and hot dogs.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
So are you painting lines?
No, no, no. What we would do is bring in like a six by six and drill holes, and then put the stakes in them with pocket mirrors, you know.
And are they coming in nose into the road? And they come in and put their nose in?
No, they're going to head pop in towards the house in the two-car garage.
Okay.
So when they back out, they can just right out that entrance.
Okay.
The exit.
I'd like to ask Max the question. Is there any current design by the town to extend sewerage and water to that area?
Is there a plan from the town right now to extend the sewer?
Yes.
Right now, the sewer should only hit the intersection.
Yeah.
But at this time, I'm not aware of any plans to expand it north unless...
It would be...
Unless we have an economic fund to...
In other words, it will be available to the intersection.
Yes, but...
Norm Golden would have sewer, Waldo Sewerage and Water.
I'd have to check that.
Norm Golden's house right on the corner.
The corner?
Yes.
Headed, yeah.
You should have access to that.
Interesting.
But it doesn't reach Burnham.
Cross the, US Route 1, yes.
So how are you getting power to this, to the wagon?
Diane has power in the greenhouse.
Right, but when you take the greenhouse out?
Well, the power is underground.
Oh, it's underground?
Yes, it's brought into my, yeah.
Okay.
It's a plug to the takeout, it's underneath.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And all of that will be, will have skirting around, and so it looks nice and neat.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is on, this is contingent on the shed, the greenhouse being removed?
Well, no, because we have room for that shed. Excuse me, whether the greenhouse is there or not.
The shed, you're asking about the shed?
I'm asking about the whole, well, actually both. So the wagon, the wagon, so you're saying none of this is contingent on the greenhouse being removed?
No, 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 because actually, we have tossed the idea back and forth of buying the greenhouse, rolling up the sides, and putting eight picnic tables in there.
Yeah.
And maybe doing kids' birthday parties, you know, beautiful hanging plants.
Yeah.
And we have, we've tossed that around. She thinks she has a buyer, but then again, I could be the buyer too, you know? So we don't, we don't know yet.
So, but this layout, so this layout, trying to make sure I understand this, because the layout that you've given us still shows, does that, I thought it...
The process is this, it's actually pretty back from everything.
Right.
Oh, wait.
I'm just trying to understand whether the greenhouse, I thought the greenhouse was not in this diagram, but is it?
The greenhouse is there.
Yeah, the greenhouse is there, the images are supposed to show if the greenhouse was sold. That was the way I was...
Yeah, the greenhouse sits to the mobile home.
Okay, no, it's here. Right, okay, so it's here, okay. Greenhouse, home garage, okay. So you don't feel that there's any potential impact for, if that greenhouse stays there for the spacing and the parking and the in and out, because they're all far enough back?
Yes, yeah, we are.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm having a little bit of trouble imagining this entrance driveway details to scale on your plans. And one thing that I'm concerned about is, there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook about that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
People have been really upset about it for quite a while, and that it's safe, not safe, and I don't know whether those issues have been resolved or not. Max, do you know?
The intersection?
Yeah, and the signage, you know, the directional signs, and people coming from different directions, and how does cars know when to turn left, or how to say that they're turning left, and where to stop at the stop sign and so on.
I can't speak to say 100% all the problems are solved there. Some people will just stop far beyond where they're supposed to stop there.
Yeah.
And a lot of it is the lines need to be refreshed.
There you go.
They need to be refreshed, so people don't, I mean, anybody knows they don't stop under a traffic light, you should stop back. But I've been in the traffic too, and I've noticed it. But, you know, with the lines being refreshed.
Yeah.
They do those, what, in the spring, maybe?
But that's mostly on Route 1.
Yeah, that's, I think it's primary, my understanding, it's primarily an issue of people turning left, coming south on Route 1, which is why the lights were changed to accommodate that, and it made two lanes, so that there was place to stop, because people were driving too far before turning left and then blocking the traffic...
Right.
Coming from 220, trying to get on and turning on to Route 1 North.
Right.
And now, if the lines get blurred, because they're worn, people are doing the same, people are doing the same thing. My biggest problem was the first time it went up. Like, I saw the light turn green, and I went to turn left, and then I said, wait a minute, there's a red one up there too. It's just the habit of too many years before they changed it, but, so I'm not excited about how much better it is. On the other hand, I don't think that that affects, that that affects this, which is further back up Route 220.
Yeah, it's not very far up 220, though, but what I was wondering, someone's coming from the north, and they want to go to the restaurant, so they're turning right onto 220.
Mm-hmm.
And then the entrance is farthest back.
Yeah, it's almost across from the entrance of the smoke shop and the Chinese restaurant. So it's a ways down the road.
Yeah, it's not too clear on this.
And I think the entrance, entrance width is 45 feet.
This is 75 feet, so you've got, it's another 300, not 300, but that would be 150. It's at least, it's over 200 feet from Route 1 to get here.
To go in the entrance.
Just by ballparking off of that.
Yeah.
I don't know if it says, if it actually mentions here how far they are from Route 1.
So DOT didn't need to do a specific approval, or they did do the approval on the new?
Should be the entrance.
Yeah, they did do the approval.
They did the approval.
Yes.
So there was, well, here's my question, there are already these entrances and exits there, and so the other was there, existing one not officially applied for or something? Is that why I had to go back and get a new one? There's already a business there with entrance and exit?
Yes, but the permit had to be under my name, the new permit.
The new permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it was, nothing changed from Diane's, her application.
So you don't, so you don't have to make anything anew, it's all there?
No, it's all there, yeah.
268.
I was wondering if Max or Debbie were aware of the accidents there recently?
I do hear about the accidents some, occasionally.
At that spot? Interesting.
And I don't know the great detail, but I do hear of the accidents that just happened on that one.
Will you leave your lunch truck there for the winter?
Yes, we live there.
Oh, you're living there?
Yeah, we live there. We rent a nice little keep.
Okay.
Yes, it will be there, because it will close if the awnings come down, all the windows. Today, they're out, because we've been in there doing some work. Yeah, it'll be there. And Diane's even said that if we want to move it, we can take it down to her house and just park it. She lives off 220 down the long road, yeah.
Okay.
So this is a question also for you, Max. I don't, I don't recall seeing the delivery service being in the application. Was it actually in the text, and I missed it, or just, I don't recall it until tonight?
In the change of use?
Yeah.
In the change of use, it's not mentioned, no.
Okay. So...
But I don't know if it had anything...
Does that matter?
Well, that's my question, is, does that need to be made part of this, or is it in?
On the top of page two, we also plan a delivery.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So I did glitch it, okay.
It was a quick little verb sentence, I didn't know the mile radius.
Okay.
Anything beyond that, I just saw, we find a delivery service.
Okay. I don't see any issue, I just wanted to make sure it's part of, because this is what we're approving, and it may be questionable whether we would need to approve a delivery service anyway, but it's, because it's part of this, it would be part of the approval.
And the reason why we chose to do delivery is because, for instance, Tuck and Chevrolet, they have a lot of employees, only half hour lunch.
Yep.
We can get their lunches to them, it cuts down the traffic coming in and out of our parking lot. You know, and we've talked to all these different people, and they're like, you know, drop your menu off, you know, and what also, our ice creams will have covers, so we can also deliver ice creams. The pharmacy's really excited about that. Yeah, so...
Okay.
I guess I have one more question. Just, I know it's not in the application, but I just wanted to clarify, there's no alcohol being served and delivered, and that's not anything that we're working towards.
No, oh, no, no, no.
Yep.
Nope, it's going to stay just the way it is, yeah.
Well, I love following that stuff online, all those fun delivery service ideas, but, you know.
Yeah. And Spraw Block, people there, they're excited, you know? Some of them don't get out much, and they'll have the rule that when they want to order, everybody better order at the same time, because we're not going to run just one hot dog, you know? Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Any comments from the audience?
I'd move we prove it as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anything else? All in favor? Motion approved?
Thank you.
You are approved.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Do I take anything with me tonight?
We have to sign something.
What do we sign here, Max?
Max will have something for us to sign, yep. Max will allow us to sign something.
I think he'll give you what you need, but...
A couple of signatures.
And I'll fill out the rest then.
Okay.
Do you have a success?
We need to date it?
Yeah, I want to.
It's the 13th, right?
It's the 13th.
3, 13, 19.
Okay, perfect.
We'll go that way.
You do?
Yeah, I'm just on the neighborhood.
Yeah. Ella Morris probably doesn't have to work, because his nose is leading himself over. So don't you dare.
Next up is Odd Alewives. I do need to, I want to say something first while you're getting prepared.
Okay.
For everybody's awareness, in the interest of transparency, my wife and I have patronized Odd Alewives Brewery, many of others of you may have. However, my wife...
We all have to confess that.
Yeah, but my wife and I also are starting a berry farm, as some of you also know, and we've given them our card with the potential, we didn't, we sold all our berries last year, so we didn't have anything to sell them, but we did give them a card to say, you know, maybe you'd be interested in our berries in the future, but we do not have an ongoing business relationship. They expressed polite, mild interest, maybe that'll come up to something, but I checked with Bill, and he said, it's not a problem, but I wanted to make everybody aware of it, and if anybody for some reason thinks, I believe I can be fair and unbiased in this case, but if anybody felt differently, now's the time to say so.
Strawberries, raspberries, blueberries?
Elderberries, aronia, which is black choke berry, so people renamed it aronia. It's a nutraceutical berry, it's a very healthy berry, and raspberries, and honey berry, and...
But Ted, you know the best part? The business name is Waldo Berries.
Waldo Berry, Waldo Berry Farm. It's not, it's Waldo Berry Farm.
Okay.
Anyway.
Whatever.
Whatever.
Waldo Berries.
Works for us. Okay, so with that out of the way.
Hi, I'm Sarah McNeil, I'm co-owner and farmer at Odd Alewives Brewery. I'll probably give you more information than you want. Should I start going through this stuff, or will it probably be...
An overview would be good. We usually try to make sure to, in the interest of time, that our board commits to reading through everything to begin with, and therefore, a lot of material is better than less material, so that we get, so believe me, this is not the biggest package that we've gotten.
Okay.
So it's good to get information, so...
Well, just an overview, we opened about nine months ago. We have a small farm and brewery. We also live on the property. And a lot of our licensing, including the food processing licensing and everything, is contained in the back. We are looking to expand our operations by putting in a wood fire oven. The oven would not be every night we're open, it would be Friday, Saturday, and possibly Sunday. And we're thinking of a kind of, we already do a pizza night on Friday where we purchase pizzas and we give them away, and this would be an opportunity for us to sell them and to grow ingredients on our farm for them as well. We would not be expanding seating, or we already have, we also have two outdoor seating we came through the selectmen board, so all of that would stay the same, we would just be offering up some food options. It'd be very limited, I should say, like, it could be as limited as a meat, a veggie, and a cheese option. That we're not going to have a million items and a million things in one unit, it's very small. Mostly for people to come out, have a beer, would like to, in the tasting room, would like to have something, a snack to eat with that. We do a lot of collaboration with other food businesses. We have a bring your own food policy. We don't plan on changing that as well. People are still welcome to bring what they would like. And we have done a lot, I've listed all the food collaborations we've done, you've seen there's a lot of businesses down there. So we'd like to also have this space to be able to continue that as well. Yes.
How far away are your properties, the snowmobile trail?
The snowmobile trail is at the bottom of the hill.
There's one across the top also.
I don't know where the top one is, but it's at, we have like, they moved it.
That explains it, doesn't it?
Yeah, they moved it. They moved it before we got our property, but there's sort of an, I know where the trail might have been, yeah. So this is down, when you go beyond our lower lot, you'll see an opening in the woods down there.
It used to go across Debbie's property, but those days are gone now, I guess.
The snowmobile?
Yeah.
It's quite nice, my wife and I walked part of it. My wife and I walked part of it recently. It's pretty nice.
Yeah.
Good enough, thank you.
So it's kind of, yeah, the entrance is down a little bit from her son's, but right across there.
Okay.
So Sarah, when you mentioned there are 34 seats in here? Is there a difference between summer and winter seats?
Well, we have the outdoor picnic tables and side yard that we don't, we don't use right now. So inside, there's 34 places to sit.
So that's the winter number?
Yeah.
Basically?
Yeah. And we have five picnic tables out front that hold about four people.
Okay, five picnic tables.
You mean four people each?
Yeah.
So is there any way of creating this lower parking lot? Do people have to walk, can they come up through your property to the tasting room? Or do they have to walk along the road, basically?
Actually, the way to get up is through the gardens. So there's a wide path that's a little larger than 10 to 12 feet wide, all the way down the hill. And so that's actually something we think is kind of nice, that you can park and you can walk up through the gardens and see them. And we don't recommend walking on the side of the road.
Okay. What about at night? Is there any lighting?
Well, we haven't opened it up at, this time of year at night. It's just sort of down there. No one uses it. And in the summer, it's light when we're still open.
Oh, okay, even if, even if somebody left when you closed?
Right, yeah. Pretty much, it's, we, we, we reduce our hours when it gets, we don't really have business late at night there. So we reduce our hours when it gets darker at night.
So someone mentioned at some point, um... Do you have to do anything different with the restrooms that you provide going with the, expanding the food service?
No, we, um, our, we met with our Health and Human Services state inspector. Showed her the space and what we were planning. And that we already have ADA compliant bathrooms, so there's no changes with that.
It looked from the drawing that you were eliminating one of them though?
We are eliminating one.
Okay, so you would be down to one?
Yes.
Okay. And you think that that, that's okay? It's going to, it will work or?
Yeah, that's, the bathrooms are quite large, actually. If we needed to make a smaller one, it may, it may be something down the road we can address with that. For the state's purpose, with our size, one is all that's required.
Okay.
And I wouldn't hesitate to consider a porta potty option if during a summertime or high frequency. I know a lot of other businesses even, you know, considered doing that.
What's the total size of your property?
acreage wise?
Yes.
Almost 21 acres.
Good, good, that's 21 here, good.
Yeah, because I don't know what ADA compliant bathroom size scale would need to be, but it is, they're both really big.
Yeah. They're 80 square feet each, so they're very large. Yeah.
I had an apartment in New York that was smaller than that. Seriously, its tallest dimension was its height. That was my, that was my space. It was in a bigger apartment, but that's, that's what I had. Anyway.
Yeah, we made them spacious. We just wanted nice big spacious bathrooms.
Yeah, yeah. So, go ahead, no, you go ahead.
For the pizza oven?
Yes.
Do you need to have any, I couldn't tell whether it was shown here, firewall or exhaust or anything like that?
So the, there will be a pipe that comes up, but it's helps, it's made with this ceramic core. And then it's heavily, heavily insulated with this thick wall of material. And then it's sealed up, up beyond that. So that's, it's, it's, it's self-contained.
So you don't have to have a...
It's vented up through the top through a pipe.
Oh, okay, it's just not shown here?
Oh, sorry, yes. It, there's a small venting that goes up straight up.
Okay. But those are all issues that the code enforcement officer would be reviewing, you know?
Yeah.
It's not really...
We did talk to him, actually, ahead of time, Stan, about that. And he had some questions about that. But we, it, it's just a pipe that goes up that's similar to what a Woodstove would have.
So it kind of looks like you're going to serve pizza out the windows too? I mean, is that what people are going to pick up?
Um, the win- The pickup would be the window that's closer to the bathroom. The, there may be a possibility in the warmer months to have a pickup, pickup out there. But the primary one would be inside. And those are mostly just like a cross ventilation, just some air. But possibly if someone was there, it won't be table service. So they'll, they'll, you know, calling out when it's time for pizza.
No skateboarding and, uh, skate waitresses?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
So there was, uh, and maybe, maybe Max, you would, at some point, you want to read this from, from Jim?
I can read that now.
I think we've covered a lot of this, but we want to read an email from one of our members who couldn't be here tonight, who's new. And he, he sent us something. And normally, our process is everything needs to be part of the public meeting. So because he sent an email to us, because he didn't know that, we're going to read it into the record so that it does become part of the public record. Okay.
Thanks, Max. Packet well received. Since I won't be at the meeting Wednesday due to a long plane trip, I want to share a few concerns about the Odd Ale Wise plans. Parking, in the summer months, it's not unusual for the upper lot to fill up. Chances of this happening will increase as the kitchen addition should result in increased patronage. The single car driveway to the upper loft has limited visibility and is quite narrow. As currently designed, you would, you would drive into the lot, find it full, then exit the upper loft, onto Old Route 1, to head east 100 yards to the lower lot entrance. If traffic stays at a low level, this shouldn't be an issue. But if the lower lot is frequently used, the ins and outs at the main driveway could be a safety issue. My suggestion is for the owners to design a way to connect the two lots on the property so cars don't need to use Old Route 1 to get from one to the other. Ideally, the existing upper drive would become entrance only and the lower drive would be enacted. The slope on Area 9 is a bit, is a bit steep, but a connector drive should be possible. Bathrooms. The application states that water and sewer connections already exist at the location of the new kitchen. That's because the corner of the existing tasting room is currently one of the two unisex bathrooms. Eliminating this bathroom leaves the facility with only one. Is inadequate, especially in the summer months when total seating potential more than doubles from the tasting rooms 34. Even in winter months, the addition of food will result in more bathroom demand, as some will want to wash up before and after eating. Possible solutions would be to add a porta john in the summer months and to add a sink somewhere for those that just want to wash up. I'm sure that other options also exist. Conclusion. I am in favor of Odd Ale Wise's application. Adding the kitchen will increase the brewery's appeal, increase employment, and bring more visitors to the area. But the parking and bathroom concerns noted should be discussed and understood when considering this application. Last thought. Great opportunity for a site visit, as we discussed last month. Best regards.
So I think we, we talked about the bathrooms. We talked a little bit about the parking lots. But I did, one of the things you mentioned in here was the potential for widening the entrance in the driveway? What was...
So we, we talked with, we consulted with someone about what our options were. And originally, we looked at a second, like an entrance and an exit. But because we're on the hillside, you, there's not enough visibility up the hill and down the other side. The main point of visibility is at where the entrance is now. So we talked about the possibility of widening it. So in the very front part, space would be carved out. An retaining wall might be able to go up. And then a car could pull over off from a...
What do you, what do you mean by very front part? What were you referring to?
Like, when you are right in front of the driveway and you're looking up and the house is on the right and the barn's straight ahead. There's sort of a bump on the right-hand side, right there.
Okay.
So that could be possibly widened a little bit so that a car could pull up over off of the road. And then depending on, we have a well, a pump well, an old well at the top, depending on the connection with the house, which we would need to look into on that. It might also be able to be removed possibly and widen up at the top. So we could, we could widen it at the bottoms and the tops and slightly in the middle, possibly.
So, so currently, is there room for two cars to pass each other on the driveway?
No.
Okay.
Not going up and down at the same time.
Yeah. So, because the only concern I would have is, is someone coming to pull in and someone pulling out. And so then the person has to wait, sitting on Old Route 1?
Right.
For the person to get out of their way, correct?
Yes, and that's where he suggested if we needed to open up the front part?
Yeah.
So a car could pull over?
Yeah.
Off from Route 1?
Have space, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
That would take a little time because he can't do the work and things until the grounds...
Yeah.
Capable of being marked.
Because otherwise, my, from being there, the, this, you are at the, at the apex of the hill. So the sightlines in both directions are really good.
Yes.
So that, that, it's sort of that passing by is the only...
Right.
Real issue that I, that I have.
How busy is that road?
It's not very busy. No, it's not a very busy road.
Are you giving any considerations of changing the sizes of your take-home container?
Like, larger or smaller?
Different.
Different.
That one size is a bit, doesn't fit all needs.
Okay, we can talk, yes. There's lots, we, we have kegs to even talk.
We can definitely go bigger.
Oh, dear.
That's a, that's a long way for a 12-ounce container.
I would say overall, though, the road is not very busy. It's quite, it's quite quiet.
And I think you pointed out really well somewhere in here, or maybe just now talking, that, that you have been serving food for quite some time. So this isn't necessarily going to produce this huge uptick in traffic on that road as well.
In fact, in some ways, I think this may stabilize some of the traffic we get. We, with a, with a free pizza night, people come at one time for a free pizza. Whereas where this is offered Friday while we're open, 3 to 8. And there's not a need to come in at that one time.
So I, if, if I get this, and I may have missed, there was, there was at least a number of mentions in here that there's some renewals that you're working on?
Yes, there's two. Yeah, there's two renewals. They're from the same department of agriculture. One is just our food processing. We, so we have a food processing license through the brewery. And so that one is just in the, in the process. We are hoping to get that, I mean, paperwork is the actual document. So it's not an issue with it being renewed. It's just a formality of receiving it. And then with that is the, um... Oh, the packaged food component that goes with that. That's our life, that, there, you apply for one and you get both. That's the paperwork for both of them. The packaged food licenses our chip and our snack permit. So when you get, you know, when they renew them both, they just do them both at once. So we should be getting that. There's not, I don't anticipate any issues with that.
You mean I have to stop selling bags of chips to my grandchildren?
They, they still allow, they, we have been in conversation there knowing it's just, things take a while sometimes.
And the alcohol server training, is that need renewal as well? Or is that, oh, you're up to date, okay.
Yeah, we're up to date on that.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's not a requirement, but we require it.
Was there any other, any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Any questions from the, or comments from the audience? Yeah, please.
I live across the street.
Yeah.
Their driveway's better than mine.
Okay, good.
It may be wider, but I've been a little, it's kind of blind. I have not seen any problems with the traffic there. When they very first opened, we did have a couple of times when people were just lined up and down the street parking. Which, that was, I think, just because they first opened. And occasionally, the, happens when there's a funeral down at the Pentecostal church. Otherwise, I think that's, my concern was, which you addressed, because I didn't realize, you do have a path going from the lower one up to the top one. Trying to, I cannot imagine trying to make a driveway down through there to connect the two, because that's quite a hill.
Right.
I used to slide on it, so.
Well, I don't, I, and I'm not, I don't know that anyone is concerned about the people driving out to park, even though Jim mentioned that. But walking on it is, so the path, I think, is, I, I agree with you. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's good for that path so they don't walk up the road.
Yeah. I, I also, and I'd like to see what the board thinks of this, but I don't see a reason to make this approval contingent on widening your driveway. But, and, and I know you have, you said there are driveways better than yours. But, but you probably don't have as many people maybe needing to go back and forth. So I'd encourage you to think about improving that a little bit, if that's possible. I, I think that would be...
As needed, absolutely.
They'll stand top of it.
As needed.
Yeah, okay. Anything else on this?
I'd move we approve it.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any other further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. You're approved. Thank you. These are both nice additions to Waldeboro, so it's nice to, and the applications were well put together. So thanks also, Max. I'm assuming that, that Max helped you out.
How's it going, Jim?
Good, good. Glad to hear it. I hear they're going to have killer pizza dough at the brewery too.
Interesting.
I'm looking forward to it.
You're in the dough business?
Rumor has it you also bake it, it's going to be providing.
Not so far. I saw him take it off the back end, but it doesn't say anything on it. So I'm going to put Odd Ale Wise right on it.
Okay.
Today is the 13th. Thank you.
I can refill all that stuff.
That's okay. Just wanted to make sure we weren't signing a mortgage or something.
Good to see you, Debbie.
All right.
You're welcome. I think, do you need this?
We're going to be staying or having some more fun? Don't you want to stay?
Do they need this? Just a second.
Coordinates changes.
When everybody stays home...
There's so many people.
Exactly. No, I don't think it was well advertised.
I don't get it.
I didn't see it at all.
I remember one time we were going to, we were going to put out a bond issue for about $700,000, $800,000 to the town office. It was the biggest crowd I'd ever seen. They were there for the hundreds.
Oh, really?
Many thousands of people there.
Oh, for some false money?
The whole town probably turned out to vote against it. Lee Smith, the town office, built with the, with the grant. And the taxpayers were quite grateful.
Interesting.
Okay.
So you were in front of the select board?
I did.
How's it going?
Do we still have to read it into the minutes for posterity?
What happened last night?
No, no, your public hearing, or just...
No, well, last night, last night was to get the select board to vote to approve having a public hearing, which we had already put on the schedule and announced. So we would have had to cancel that part of the meeting if the select board hadn't approved it. So that way it can go on the warrant to, they can vote to put it on the warrant to, um, to have in, so it can be voted on in June.
Excellent, good.
So, um.
Wait a minute, so this is a public meeting?
Yeah.
This is the public meeting!
The night before?
Well, the select board meeting is public, but the, yeah, the select board.
But it doesn't have to be in the paper for?
Well, Max put it in the, and I, he.
Put it in two weeks ago.
That's what he, yeah, after the last meeting, we, we agreed. When we, when we as a board voted to, and we can confirm when Max comes in. When we as a board voted four to one to go back to the select board with the, the revised L U O Article Seven and Article Ten, Max said, okay, I'll put that at the same time as we scheduled with the select board. That Max was gonna put it in the notice so that there was two weeks, right? So there was two weeks, it was, it was in the.
It should have been in the paper, uh, the week after we had our special meeting.
Right, so that, so.
Legally done.
So it's legally done. Now, that doesn't mean that there won't be a lot of questions when it gets on the warrant. And however that works, is there like a, Susan, do you know when, when, when they set up and have the warrant out for the, what's gonna get voted on, is there another public meeting just before the vote? Or is it just voters get to ask questions? I don't even know how that works.
I don't remember.
Okay.
Uh, we can hold one if we want.
What about putting information on the wall somehow that it's, we have that to explain?
Well, once the absentee ballots are made.
Yes.
Uh, then, uh, we post a draft on the town notice board.
Standard procedure, yes.
Right in the hallway.
And so then, so that people would have access to the fully, full copies of the revised ordinances?
It will say, it will give the basic question, approve the changes to Articles Seven and Ten.
Okay.
And then what we'll do is have copies of them available. Maybe on, I'll ask to see if it's fine to have them on a front desk.
Okay.
So that those who see it can.
Okay.
See it right there. I can also have it, um, at the library.
Okay, and you can use that summary, that summary page?
Uh, yes, I'm probably gonna have the summary, uh, similar to what I did for tonight. I'm gonna have the summary page, Article Seven and Article Ten.
Great.
Together.
That'll do it, cause I just wanna make sure people do, cause who weren't aware of this have an opportunity to see the stuff and comment. Okay. Cool.
So what came up at select board meeting, anything interesting?
No. Oh, uh, not, there was something, there were interesting things not related to, to my speechifying. They, they listened politely and, um, there were no questions and they voted unanimously to proceed with this. There was, um, the most interesting thing to me was a lot of discussion about the well. The well system in town and the need for a rate increase. Um, and the company that's managing it for the town now is, um, is asked if the town was interested in just, in selling the town's assets to the company that, that manages the, the well system.
The assets being the water?
The, the, the tower, the, the land that the tower's on, the pump and the well. And then that, we, it would be incorporated into Rockland Camden Warren.
USA Water, Ohio.
And, um, so there is potential financial advantages for the town to doing that cause we have a lot of debt associated with it. So, um, and then the rates that the, that the rates that people in town would pay would be the same rate as everybody pays. And they, they sort of move around their capital investments depending on where it's needed in the various towns. So, cause I guess the issue right now is that there's no, the town is covering the, the money that they're getting for the rates. I guess the town hasn't addressed the rates in a long time.
For sure.
And so the rate, the, the money that comes in pays the basic, like running the pump and, you know, and, you know, people's, uh, salaries and stuff like that. But there's zero money for fixing anything. So if anything needs to be fixed, the town just has to go and fix it. And then it takes a while and there's, so there's no, they haven't built up, they should have any, any company. You need to have a capital asset available for infrastructure stuff and fixing things when it comes up. Um, and that, and there isn't anything. And so that's one of the reasons why they, they want, they're proposing a rate increase is to try to build up, uh, some assets in the, in the well system. So that has to happen anyway because even if the town decides we don't wanna be in the water business anymore, and sells the, sells it to them, that's gonna take quite some time. So, in fact, the whole process for rate increase takes a while anyway, cause they have to, the state approval has to be, you know, people have to be notified.
But at the time it was put together, uh, it was considered very desirable for the town to own it. I'd wanna listen very carefully to the details if we make any consideration of selling it.
Yeah.
Very happily.
Yeah. So that would be, that should, is certainly something that people should be, should follow up on. And, you know, I think the, the select board expressed, well, we'll, we'll consider it. I think the, the, you know, the, I think there are probably some of them, I got the impression that a few of the members, would be happy to cons, may, maybe you're thinking that we don't wanna be in the water business, so, you know, we'll have to see.
Sell it to Nestle.
With a, with a license from USA Water, we're not gonna do any better. That's superb, state of the art.
Yeah.
And that's what we're dealing with. The other ones running the uranium and the radon removal and, uh, that level expertise is hard to duplicate. I listened to a PhD scientist explain it when they put it in and, uh, Tom Walder, I couldn't find anybody like him. He was one of a kind.
Well, I have my own system. Go ahead.
What the gentleman said, that the parent company was a Connecticut firm, not Ohio.
The company, in my opinion, what I, my impression was it was national. And, uh, I have no idea where they're actually located at a given moment, or which option is using.
Called the Connecticut Water Company or something of that sort.
And let's see, what, I, what, uh, main water, uh, you, what, the main company and, uh, the national, Water USA and they go by all kinds of corporate names. I just wonder how the names have been shuffled around as to who's in charge at a given moment.
Is it likely that every, I wonder if, um, water and sewer, um, every house that gets town water probably uses town water sewer facilities? Is that, is there a direct?
Makes a big difference where the lines run. And, uh, Max should be an expert on, uh, the exact location of the lines by now.
Yes, I've actually had to look at some water and sewer lines.
Many times.
Many times.
Not surprised.
How many more times than you wanted to look at water and sewer lines?
One, one for customer.
Okay.
But is that being run properly? Is there money to maintenance and?
Do we have a profit from the water system?
From the septic?
For the sewer system, I, I'm not sure.
That's separate, John Fancy.
Yeah, that's, that's the number, not fancy, that give us on.
But the town has a, has a fund for maintaining utilities and, uh, unless the sum is large, I doubt we can handle it.
Weren't they looking at solar to run the, um, well pump?
Never even thought of it.
No, I think that they were looking at that, cause they, they buy quite a bit of diesel, I believe, to run that thing.
That's, it's quite possible. When you look at where the solar farm is and so on. Have you done the details lately of where we put in another major solar farm?
I mean, there are places all over Waldeboro, but, um.
Nothing's been defined definitively.
Yeah, nothing, nothing definitive.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I think they should go on top of storage units.
They're not big enough.
Well, they, they're pretty big. But, you know, think of it, that's just some solid metal buildings sitting there, clear, cleared off of all trees around them.
All those football fields, no. Nice flat spaces.
Used to be, we needed those fields for feeding the horse and the cow and those days are gone.
Yeah.
And therefore a lot of fields have not been used economically that viably at all.
Yeah.
And if Max can figure out how to sell that whole prospect to somebody that owns the property, uh, we all could benefit right here in town.
I don't know, I have to buy my straw from Canada.
There you are.
I want someone to grow straw around here.
Wow.
Yeah.
The Canadian may be subsidized and somebody would have a hard job perhaps growing it around here at an economical price that Joe wouldn't pay.
Well, so many of the fields are just not, are not quality enough to, you know, I have a field, but no one would.
I'm talking about straw mulching, it's not even bedding.
They were adequate for hay for the horse and the cow.
Well, they kept it, they kept it, uh.
Mowed.
Yeah. Okay, so next on the agenda is minutes from the February twentieth meeting. And I understand that there's a change from the printed copy.
Uh, I think Tara, it's Tara's change.
Yes.
And I think we ought to hear from Tara as to whether she's happy with the changes. I phrased it.
Yeah, that was perfect. Sorry, I thought I responded back to you.
You responded back to me, but it didn't make it to the copy that got distributed to people. And Max wanted us to discuss it at tonight's meeting.
Sure. It was one, yeah, sir, take it away.
No, I was just gonna say, so what we're, on the second page, on the paragraph, um, starting with Worcester, which is the fourth paragraph, we are deleting the second and third sentences, which, um, the second sentence starts Pilat and ends, and the second sentence ends at Worcester. Worcester, sorry. I'm a Massachusetts guy. And, uh, and we are substituting, Pilat said that Waldeboro appears to have a very specific septa, septic setback ordinance. She suggested that at a time when we are attempting to grow Waldeboro economically, it could harm the town's ability to attract new buyers or investors if local ordinances appear to be too restrictive.
Yeah, that, and that was just, again, my own opinion.
Yeah.
I think that reads as my opinion.
And it matches my recollection after I heard it. So.
So that was, that was my only comment.
So what are we eliminating? Just that second sentence?
The second and third sentences.
And third sentence and, and putting all that in.
Yeah.
Substituting the second and third sentence of a slightly different sentence.
Other than that, I thought they looked great. Well captured.
Any other comments or changes to the minutes?
I like the changes showing that we're attempting to be sensitive to people's, uh, ability to adapt.
So if there are no other, any other, no other comments, um, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes as modified. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Oh, were you, are you abstaining?
Yeah. Okay, that goes in my file. Okay. So we are on to comments from planning board members.
Where's the pizza?
Uh, sorry, that's a good idea.
Do you have anything Max?
For next month?
Yeah.
Um, so far I only have two people who have shown interest. I'm gonna have to contact them to see if they're going to have an application ready by next week. One of them is, uh, a permanent person, a per, a permanent private pier in the shoreline zone.
Ooh. Ooh.
And the second would be, um, bulk storage for a chemical in the wellhead protection zone.
Oh, wow, these are good things.
Clarify, just to clarify. Just to clarify with the second one.
Could we store, could they store that chemical on the pier that the other guy's building?
Uh, no. Just to be clear, the second one, the storage for a chemical, that's propane.
Oh.
It's fine to have near a well.
It's for Atlantic laboratories.
Ah, okay.
Where's that at?
That is.
Windmill's Mills.
Near the industrial, on Depot Street.
Yes, okay.
That's all I heard from their application, the, the exact details.
Would this wharf be across clam flats or on a rocky shore?
Um, I do not believe it is interfering with clam flats.
Good.
They're having guardly endorsing involved with it.
But, uh, no clam flats? Good.
No, cause they also sent it, I believe they're also sending it to the D P. And when I looked at that application, I believe it did say it doesn't interfere with clam flats.
That's a serious consideration, thank you.
And a permanent private pier means it's not a, a thing that they take up after the season?
Right.
No.
It's, it's just a, a wooden sort of walk, walking path, some, I think, concrete, uh, what's it called? Um, not columns, but sort of anchors at the bottom. And then they may have a temporary dock at the end that they'll bring in through the summer. But it's that pier that we're talking about. But, um, that's.
Are you considering the possibility of ice, uh, having an influence on that pier?
What?
Are you considering ice, uh, having a major impact on the pier?
Uh, oh, oh, you're talking about actual ice, um.
Absolutely.
Uh, again, I, we need the applicant to talk more on it.
Yeah.
They, there doesn't seem to be any concern on it and I don't think ice would have a, are we talking like on it or into the water?
Uh, capable of moving it.
Of moving the pier?
Pier, yes.
Uh, the pier, I don't think will be able to be.
Where's it gonna be?
Uh, two ninety-eight Spruce Lane, I believe.
Which is?
It's, um, off of Friendship Road.
Okay.
Just.
Spruce what?
Spruce Lane.
Spruce Lane?
Spruce Lane.
Interesting. No, but ice is very, as Ted's point, freezing around it and then getting moved around by the tie, ice, it's pretty power, it's just, it's pretty strong.
That's why they're gonna have the concrete, uh.
Piers?
Uh, not piers, uh.
Pilings?
Pilings.
Pilings.
That's what I meant by piers, but actual pilings, yeah.
Yeah.
Ah, wow. Interesting.
I wonder if they can get piers insured?
I don't know. I don't know when there is such a thing. There's flood insurance. I mean, you can insure anything if you wanna pay enough money.
That's true.
I'll make sure of that. And other than that, um, like I said last month, there is, um, uh, moving forward with the select boards to remove the medical marijuana dispensary and cultivation area from the land use ordinance. Uh, Scott was there last night.
Yeah, that was.
Moratorium, a town vote for a moratorium will be done in two weeks to put a hold on it, so that's.
What do you mean, put a hold on removing it?
Vote in two weeks?
Two weeks, there'll be a special town meeting to vote for a moratorium. So that a dispensary can't get approval between now and June.
But the ones that are already here are grandfathered in.
We do not have a dispensary. All, all the things that have been approved have been caregivers.
Yeah, sorry.
So wait a minute, who votes, I mean, you, the public votes?
It's a townwide, townwide vote.
So if two people show up to vote, that's who swings the vote?
Uh, I think, I think there's a, I think there's specific standards for the attendance, but, uh.
Well, I'm curious what it is.
Yeah, and I think that's why they, they're trying to advertise it now.
The vociferous few usually get their way in a lot of those things for that reason.
But this is just supposed to be a temporary moratorium, so.
All right. Well, yeah, it seems like a.
How are they defining temporary?
So what a moratorium will do is, uh, up to six months. It essentially replaces the language in the ordinance saying, until this end date, uh, business in this moratorium is not allowed to get approval or operate. Or a new business in this category cannot gain approval to operate. So if this moratorium goes into effect, between, and let's say it happens on the twenty-sixth, when the vote is supposed to happen. Between March twenty-sixth and September twenty-sixth, if someone walked into the office and said, to my office and said, I wanna open up a medical marijuana dispensary and cultivation area along Route One A where it's, in this ordinance, it's a lot to be. I would have to say, no, there is a moratorium in place. And so you would not be allowed to go to the planning board until September twenty-seventh of later this year.
To the best of your knowledge. To the best of your knowledge, how the various operations here in Maine standardizing the dose of THC?
How many businesses operate with...
Has the state got standards absolutely defining what you're buying? When you, when you buy a cannabis product containing THC?
My understanding is that the dispensaries actually have a more standardized process. And that's why a lot more people prefer them versus a caregiver where you might get sort of a fluctuation.
Yes.
I don't know, I'm getting all this sort of secondhand, it's not research that I've done by...
Thank you. But... I've heard some rumors myself, but this, when you're buying alcohol, you know exactly the percentage you're buying.
Exactly.
And THC is, got a lot of comparisons. And I didn't, I'm not in favor of THC until you know exactly what you're getting. Some of those doses are off the chart and you don't wanna be blindsided.
What I'm hearing is the dispensaries are, are, because they have more regulations or have to go through a lab, they have a higher standard of proof to meet.
I've listened to some of that.
Yeah, but I, I, again, I am certainly not the expert.
So what happens in September? The moratorium, moratorium's over in September, but then what happens?
Well, what, what we're, what is supposed to happen is, the moratorium is a temporary item. And I'm just saying September, this, who knows, up to six months.
Yeah.
What is supposed to happen is a warrant should be on the June ballot to, with the question of just, do you approve the change to the land use ordinance regarding medical marijuana dispensaries? In which any reference to that is just being removed, essentially having the town opt out of that. So what I am hoping is the moratorium will go into effect. And in June, the town will vote ballot wise, not special town meeting. So all five thousand people have the chance to do their vote. If it's approved, if that question is approved, then the moratorium essentially serves its purpose. We don't have to go all six months.
So you're, in June, you're voting on whether we're gonna have them at all in town or not?
Correct.
That's the vote?
Correct.
Okay.
And if the vote is no, then once September happens, the select board may extend it to another three months, I think, so that it can then be on the November ballot if they want. Or if they just wanna let the moratorium die and leave it in the ordinance.
Okay.
But you're only talking on recreational marijuana?
Medical marijuana dispensaries, that is the only thing this moratorium and ordinance change is talking about. Just medical marijuana dispensaries.
Okay, that's just looking for the capital definition, thank you.
Only in Route one?
Yes.
Right now.
So I got a call from a citizen about someplace that's going, that's in, up on...
Winslow Mills?
Yeah, so what is the, what is that all about?
So, do, does everyone remember back in, I think it was August, Herbal Solutions? The, the Father and the Son?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, who are operating the place on the other half of the Babe Shop.
Yes.
They are, that is where they are growing. Now...
You mean up Winslow Mills Road?
Up Winslow Mills Road, yes. It's in, it's in the old warehouse that is behind the church.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. There's nothing regarding where someone is allowed to cultivate. It's supposed to be a more private matter of...
Yeah, gotcha.
Limited number of plants and all that stuff.
Gotcha.
Yep, they, they can do up to thirty, where six per patient. It's, unless the town creates something...
Yeah, got it.
There's nothing to really say.
But so they're not, that's, they're not, okay. They're not dispensing from there, they're dispensing from there.
They're dispensing up here, yes.
Got it, okay.
Now, in terms of the building itself, if there is a third lease, they, it will trigger a subdivision. I do need to tell Bob Emery that, the person who owns that building up on Winslow Mills.
Yeah, there's a le, what'd you say, a third lease?
If there, if it's split, if there's a third...
Renter.
Yes.
Then that...
To split it up.
If there's a third renter, what?
To, splitting up the building. Because right now, there's the one lease in the basement.
Okay.
For Tim and Carl to grow their plants.
Okay.
There's a second one, on the ground floor, that it's just personal storage.
Okay.
And at the top floor, it, someone is renting it as an apartment.
Okay.
So that's two leases right now. If there's a third lease, it triggers a subdivision and it will come to the planning board.
Oh, I see, okay. Fascinating.
Sounds like it's three already, if there's three different uses.
One's the owner?
Yeah, two are being leased to people. One is a personal use for the person who already owns the building. So it's...
Yeah, I should know that.
The owner and two last seats.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for that.
That is something else. I know, I know you enjoyed hearing that yesterday with Tom and Susan.
Okay. Anything else?
I think it's amazing, we've got all this done, hour and a quarter.
We're not done, Tara has some.
I, I'm gonna take three minutes. Yes, please start your watches. And, and I'm gonna stumble through this because this is, this is probably the first time saying this to a group of more than two people. So April will be my last planning board meeting.
I'll say it.
Yes, no, I, I'm very sad about it. So...
We'd probably take you back.
I, yes, no, I, I, I understand that.
Do you want Max to stop that?
I just don't want Susan to take a whole bunch of notes.
Okay.
We're also recording.
Yeah, no, that's fun, like, like two people will watch that. I just wanted to say how, how much I've enjoyed my time here. And what I thought about what being here has given me, besides laughs on a Wednesday night that I wouldn't otherwise have. I think about all the places that I've lived in my life, which at this point, I think I've moved every two years, literally since I was a child.
Oh, my.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm a gypsy. And so it was my intention to stay and I'm not staying, and that's very sad. But this is the first place that really felt like home and that I felt like I, I have a sense of community and belonging, and that's not something I had before.
Appreciate the compliment immensely.
I, I thank you all.
So Tara, are you moving out of the area?
Yeah. So I wish I could stay, I wish I could come back.
Yeah, we need, we need, we need the town to approve Skype membership, because then we'd be at seven. Because we could have, because we could have, we'd still have a mem, a member in Washington.
Right.
We could do it by Skype, but apparently doesn't get the rules.
Uh, well, currently I am under con, well, so, I'm on some wood, because things are dicey. I'm under contract on a home in Naples.
Oh.
So, yeah, lots of fun water things to talk about on Sabaico and Brandy Pond and Long Wake. So real excited. I hope I get some references for...
Will you keep working in Augusta?
I plan to for the foreseeable future, yes. So, it's gonna be different.
Well, we'll miss you.
Why was it from Naples to Augusta?
Uh, it's just over an hour, depending on the weather. So, not that much longer than I drive now.
You just have to battle three oh two a lot.
Yeah, I've heard that's, everyone comes up in the news a lot.
Three oh two is absolutely horrible. But don't let that bother you.
Yeah, if I can't talk you out of it. Well, we'll miss you.
Yeah, thank you for all your contributions.
Thank you all.
It's been good.
Maybe in two more years you'll move back.
A good addition.
I honestly, you know, the way my life's going, that's a real possibility. So, yeah. So thank you all so much for the experiences and, and the learning and the, the memories here that I get to take away. Thanks.
Absolute human need to relate better in all directions.
Absolutely. So everyone, have a great evening. Killed the mood. Let's end this meeting.
Okay, is that a motion to adjourn?
That is my motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.